Recording whenever you guys are ready.
Okay, good, thank you. It's seven thirty. I'll call the regular meeting of the township. I'm sorry, it's not a regular meeting, it's special meeting of the township, Haron Township zoning commission to order. And Ms. Rube, would you call the role plays?
Mike Tabbler.
Here.
Benny Manson.
Here.
Tom Need.
Here.
Brittany Hoprake is not here. Louie Greenwell.
Here.
And Alan Zico.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Well, as you all know, tonight, basically, our agenda is to review the minutes and then to address the revisions of articles twelve, fourteen, and twenty-three. So let's, Scott's not here yet. He needs to be here so we can go through the proposed changes that he submitted and offer any additional comments, suggestions, et cetera. Tom's gone through and Tom has made a lot of suggestions which he did online and those are in print. You also have a copy of the, well, Brittany is here. Thank you, Brittany, for coming. So we'll get back to the addressing the revisions in the articles after we take care of the minutes for our workshop meeting on March the ten. Questions with regarding the minutes. Think we've got input from, maybe not everybody, but you have received input. Yeah, so the conversion that we have is the version where you've accepted all of the comments that have been submitted, correct? Okay.
Well, I just have one thing I noticed on page one, three paragraphs from the bottom. The idea of censoring motion is very attractive, but it's it's a sent, it's a motion sensor.
Yes.
S E N S O R.
Oh.
Probably one of those.
A motion censored system.
We're not going to allow motion.
Okay.
There are some funny things that the autocorrect corrects too on these things.
Anybody have anything else?
On page three, fourth paragraph down, there's a something that didn't get eliminated, has a cross out in it. A word.
Three, did you say? I'm sorry. There's multiple versions of that in mine. Second paragraph, third paragraph, and the fourth paragraph.
Oh, I see. Yeah. The word placed.
Yeah, and the paragraph above it.
I wonder why I didn't take care of that when she accepted the changes.
I wanted to accept it online. Like I don't have any other cross outs online anymore.
Okay. Well, there's a couple of places of cross outs, ours will just get rid of them.
Still correct though.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not online.
Good.
Okay, no biggies there. All right. There's nothing further, a motion to approve the minutes?
Approve the minutes of the workshop meeting of March tenth as corrected.
And is there a second?
A second.
And Tom needs seconded. Johnny moved. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing done. Then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Okay, the minutes for March ten are approved. Yeah. Do we have anyone that's joined us? I don't see anything up on the screen or on.
It's like Bob, Bob Singer is on.
Is Bob there? Okay.
Hi, Bob.
Hello, Bob.
Looking at his ceiling fan.
Hi, all.
All right. Minutes are approved. Well, Scott's not here yet, but as far as I know, he'll be here. He didn't give me any indication he wasn't coming today.
Um, one, one, uh, one comment. Um, I didn't have enough tabs with the new, excuse me. The new doubts that you gave us.
Yes, I looked to see if I could order more and not order like further out than I think it was what thirty-five or something like that.
What I found was it at Office Max, I found legal tabs.
Okay.
Standard size from one to twenty-five and twenty-six to fifty.
Oh, that's nice. Okay.
Expensive.
Oh, I'm sure.
So, but that's what I got here.
Okay, yeah, I realized, and so I just put like little sticky notes on the one for my office.
I just created my own too. Yeah.
There are, there are legitimate tabs if you want to go to the expense.
Um, do we have a hearing next week? I don't, I think that's the, I don't think I have the copy of that yet.
Yeah.
You might have.
April seventh, do you have a copy of that?
Yeah, I can get for you. Should have been on your folder.
Which is technically not yet.
Or two weeks.
Goodness.
It's twenty-five dash oh four. And it's Derek and Lorraine Neff.
That the P C D?
This is, it's on Center Village. Right across from the other one that's
Yeah, it's
working its way through the system.
Okay. Thank you.
It's on our, uh, the hearing is scheduled for next, not next week, two weeks now. Our first regular meeting in.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, because the first of April is a Tuesday, so we, we skipped the.
Yeah. Probably a good thing we're not having it on the April the first, right?
I make a motion that we go to twenty-eight day months.
And what do we do with those extra days in the year?
Just take a vacation.
Oh.
I'll second that motion.
Running for office?
Well,
daylight savings.
Um, I don't have a private number for Scott or I'd call him and find out.
There was a car that just pulled in as we were checking.
You saw.
Saw some sort of car that was.
Who provided these pictures?
Examples.
But let me just say by way of, I guess, clarification, you've got copies of the minutes as Scott had submitted them with his edits and then you also have second copy which reflects changes that, that Tom has made and suggested in terms of revisions in the same ones. I had submitted those to Scott, not necessarily with an expectation that he was going to go ahead and include them, but so that he would be aware and have that information to take a look at and be aware of before we had our meeting night. And here he is. And as I've indicated, you know, we would go through basically letting Scott lead the discussion and we'll follow his version. And then because we have been a copy of the comments that suggested changes that Tom wanted to make rather than having them being just described to us verbally each time, we have a copy of what Tom is suggesting in terms of changes. And I have it up here online. I don't know about whether you.
Super quick question.
Oh, sure.
Um, just so that I make sure everybody has one. Do all of you have the net package?
I do.
They must have just given a ton of extras. Like I have like fifteen years. I mean.
I didn't, I don't have it with me, but yeah, I should have it at home. I haven't really reviewed it yet. If I discover I don't, I'll come back.
Yes, I have turned them. I was just making sure.
But I, I know, I know you handed them out, so I'm assuming I've got mine at home in a separate file.
All right, sorry.
They usually include enough for the trustees too for their meeting.
Yes, but there's, I mean, there's like at least ten more than that. So I'm like, did I forget to pass this? Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure. Sorry.
No, no, that's good. I'm glad you asked for the clarification on that. Well, getting back to our reason for meeting tonight is to address these articles and potential revisions that we want to make in them. So Scott, I'll go back to you now and we'll start with article twelve. You can take it from there.
Okay, I, I'm taking it. Um, well, well, all I would say, why didn't our, if we didn't have these other changes was I submitted the I just submitted what we were, what we, I submitted a copy reflecting what we talked about last time. So I didn't, I didn't know if I was I didn't have a huge list to follow, but I know that Tom last month, maybe twice. So um, if there, if there were things that he that you all want to add, then I can certainly do that. I didn't look at a lot of consistency issues, I guess, from one to the other. I was just reflecting what you thought last time.
Yeah, well, I submitted it to you and you may have heard me, I had a chance to read my email back to you today, but as I was explaining to them, I wanted you to see them just to have them so you would know.
And I've got them.
Um, and everybody else has a copy, as I've said, now, it's, it's just, but for you, I was expecting that you would indeed go through. So you already had made some changes and basically there's a lot of the changes that Tom's proposing, which are concerns that he had about some consistencies. Some of the other changes are indeed wording changes, but we'll, as we go through the document with your lead, we can then also discuss, let Tom introduce his recommendation, recommendation for a change and then we will as a group make a decision about, because obviously it's not an individual zoning commission member who's going to make the revisions, we as a group will. And as we go through, we can decide whether or not we want you to incorporate these then in the next draft. All right. With that, under the purpose, you just we, we dropped the word, you've got a cross through or deletion of the word commercial in that first paragraph. Tom made a lot of other changes in that first paragraph, as you can see, neighborhood office district.
And those sound good. I mean, I don't want to, at this point, to switch back and forth. There, there were more strange things about the way C two was written, so I made more changes there to try to merge some things together. So, yeah, anything that makes this better is great.
The wording. Well, is there, okay, then if everyone will look at the version that Tom submitted, looking at his wording, is there anything there that anyone's uncomfortable with? Or do you think that what we would want to do is suggest to Scott that those indeed be the changes made? He made the note at the bottom. This is the only district that was written in a future tense. And maybe that's because we had, I don't know, we've been revising the other ones. This, this one says will, the others just.
Actually, C one and C two both are both cast in the future tense.
Yeah.
Um, but it, it, it just seemed out of place to me that their district, they, they exist. This one's existed, I don't know for how long. So I just, I just recast it. I put some, you know, the neighborhood office district becomes the subject and just goes on from there. It doesn't really change the sense of it, except to take the the future tense out. And then the last, what I have in bracket, obviously is not part of the part of the text. It's just an explanation of what I was doing. So where it says bracket, no other district in the zoning resolution or actually C one and C two has its purpose cast in the future tense. That's not just a comment, a comment. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure why this one was future tense. If there is a reason, probably not. Scott, do you know? It's just the way it was, everything. So everybody comfortable then with the rewording that Tom's done? You have any questions about that yourself, Scott? Uh, application. Uses delete the word all and proposed uses permitted herein. Um, only change. Go ahead. Number the next paragraph. No changes in twelve oh three. I'm just addressing it. The capitalization.
Yeah.
And then A under A.
So basically, what I was trying to do is to take B and C and merge them into A.
Yeah.
To move veterinarians up with physicians.
We did have some discussion about that, Scott, at our last, one of our meetings, and you weren't there about then the wording of that.
Well, I think John wanted us to generalize it a little bit more, make it a little less specific, a little bit more general, which I think you have done.
Um, and then I took, you know, I think the reason that B is in there was that was simply provide that there's no drive up windows. And I put that in section twelve oh five where, where there's prohibited uses. So, and that becomes drive up window becomes a prohibited use. So.
Yes. Let's see, where'd you put that, Tom?
At the very end of twelve oh five.
Very end of prohibited use. Okay. So you added an F there.
And it basically, it picks the wording up from, from article thirty-four.
What do you think? Commission? About the proposed change from Tom?
So in parentheses, that's just a note for us to can, to notice that. Do you think there should be a phrase at the end of B that said, that says not except as noted, but as regulated?
I, I just took, I took B out entirely. There's no.
Oh, I thought, okay, I thought that was referencing other offices.
So.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah. We still have a B. It's just other offices.
Yeah, but I took the first B out.
Oh, I took, I'm sorry. Yes, I took the first, I took the first, the, the B that remains.
Used to be.
Does Scott have a copy of Tom's edits?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I mean, I.
I thought you, I thought you were telling us to watch out for other offices similar in nature or character to make sure we caught drive in windows. But that was just your reference to the whole B. So, sorry, I didn't understand.
So, Tom, for purposes of the comments you made, anything that's in brackets is just a comment. It's not meant to stay in the text. It's all that we all know.
Yeah.
So we don't have to discuss it every time.
Yes, but in that case, I thought it would reference a phrase that needed to be added to be, but I see that it does.
Yeah.
Uh, do we need any reference to banks, credit offices, et cetera? I mean, by deleting it, there's no reference to it. We've got insurance agencies, insurance brokers, real estate, law offices, offices, physicians. We don't say anything about you know, financial kinds of related institutions.
Accountants and financial planners. And then we have Bs, other offices similar in nature or character. And I felt that was broad enough that anything that somebody wanted to work in an office would be fine. So, and we leave it up to the zoning inspector, so doesn't have to go back to the B Z A, doesn't come back to us.
Well, that's why I'm asking, if anyone thinks that the, the way that it's worded, according to what you've got here, is everyone comfortable with that? That's my question. Trying to provide direction here.
Yeah, I think it's, it's probably okay.
And if you wanted to put credit agency before insurance agency, I think you're, you're trying to keep everything alphabetical. No, I didn't even realize that. Maybe. If not.
You want to insert credit agencies, you mean in that first paragraph?
Yeah.
All right. Where do, yeah, that's gonna be my question.
Before insurance agency?
Well, it should be in the list before it gets to offices of physicians.
Yeah, it, well, it looks like it's alphabet. Office facilities for providing personal services such as credit agencies, insurance agencies, brokers, real estate.
Yeah, I think that's a good place for it.
Just make it. That's good.
Such as credit agencies, put it first?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you've got financial planners later in the, in the list. So between credit agencies and financial planners, that should accommodate most banking related. Assuming there's no draft through or drive up window.
Okay.
And the banks would be under C.
A.
Excellent.
And don't you think a bank operates more like a commercial use?
Well, yeah, I mean, a bank, banks are in C two where drive up windows are, are allowed for that purpose. But
Okay, then in paragraph C now was E. The only change that Tom has added is to stick in board of township trustees. Is that a question of consistency, Tom? We do that sometimes. We don't do it every day.
But you know, when it's late at night and I'm just.
Okay.
Browsing through here.
These are your fun activities.
What?
These are your fun activities.
The house is quiet.
All right.
Dogs are asleep.
Next page, page two. Uh, or finish that paragraph really, because that paragraph is under conditional uses. Goes on to the next, uh, next page.
I have a question, that comment that Tom added about the board of zoning appeals, he took out, replaced authorities with the board of zoning appeals. Are they the ones that actually? I guess they're the ones who have to take the action to revoke a permit. If it's their permit. It's not the inspector that revokes a permit. It's the board, does the entire board take action to revoke the permit or does the inspector do it? I don't know for sure. I'm unsure. That's why I was asking. I think would have to be the board. If they, if they approved it to begin with, it's not his place to reject it.
Well.
Is there, is there with leaving it authority?
They, do they grant? Does the inspector grant?
I have talked with Mike about that and I don't know, has he generated it yet? Because he said he was going to create one. There isn't one, but he did indicate he was going to do one.
Create what?
A permit?
The permit of compliance.
But, but the inspector would grant the permit. It wouldn't be the board of appeals that would grant the permit, right?
No, the board of appeals would approve it and then he would issue the permit. He was, he's the only one who issues the permit.
So then, so then does he, does he revoke that then?
Oh, the, the board of zoning appeals approve it. The, the zoning inspector can revoke it.
Okay, that was my whole question about.
So I'm sorry, I missed, I misunderstood the question.
So where it says authorities, I assumed that meant the board of zoning appeals. And what we're saying now is that it's actually the zoning inspector that has the authority.
Well, he get, what he does would be to cite, cite them as a violation.
Okay.
They either accept his citation and make a correction, or they can appeal it back to the B C A.
And if the B Z A says.
And then the B Z A would make the determination that, well, yeah, we agree the zoning inspector is correct. You violated it.
And, and you, and, and you're.
But the zoning inspector is the one who would issue the, uh, this, the citation.
But who revokes the permit?
Basically, it's, it, it's being done when the zoning inspector cites a violation, the, the authority would go back to the board of zoning appeals to revoke the permit.
The way Tom has it listed is correct? Or do we not really need to get that specific?
It said authorities before. And that. If we left it to authorities, it could be. Could be anybody. It could be the zoning inspector or whoever has the power to do such.
Okay.
And I've felt uncomfortable leaving that, that open. Authorities. You want to say zoning authorities?
Yeah. I understand what you're saying there in terms of the concern about that. The, the zoning inspector doesn't revoke it. He issues a violation, a citation that is in violation. Then the vote, board of zoning appeals would vote on it to whether to revoke it or not. Am I correct on that interpretation?
Sure, that's the way that's written. I, I guess authorities is in there because they're both involved, but the actual revoking.
It's by the B Z A.
The board.
Yeah.
This is technically more accurate, but I don't know, I could see it either way because zoning inspector has to come to the B Z A to say, hey, this is a problem.
So you think we should leave it, or go to board of zoning to fill this?
I want to recommend one of the. I mean, here on page twenty-eight oh five, this is article twenty-eight under section twenty-eight oh seven E revocation. The board of zoning appeals may revoke a conditional use permit for failure to comply with the conditions of that.
Right, so, but that's, that doesn't mean that the zoning inspector won't issue a violation.
Right, but that's not revoking.
No, that's not revoking it. That's bringing it back, basically.
Okay.
So he could just, he would let the, he lets the property owner know, then he goes to the B C A with a recommendation, so to speak, to revoke it.
And, but this says here specifically in, in article twelve to revoke the permit. And so I would, you know, these two sections going together, I would say it's the board of zoning appeals that revokes the permit.
Okay, yeah, we're all in agreement, Tom.
Okay.
Change it.
We're all in agreement, I think. No one's speaking up, but that isn't, okay, so.
And then somebody started to talk about, does the zoning department have a permit?
And you're saying. That's what I thought you were referring to when we started the discussion. The permit of compliance issued by the zoning inspector. That's what I was referring to.
Okay.
That Mike has indicated that he would develop that. There is not, there was not, has not been one. And, and that's why I was asking Ashley if he had done that yet.
Be the one to write it up, so no.
Uh, yeah, you would be.
Are you his A?
He gives me all the words and says, make this look pretty on a form. And I have not yet. So I'm assuming no. Um, and I'm looking under all of our forms and I do not see one. So no, we have not worked on that just yet.
Yeah, but.
How do you, how do you comply until you're actually doing the act?
Most of the time, these darn things are coming to us, not before they've already done it. They're already doing it. And they're trying to make themselves legal.
I know what you're talking about.
So we have to remind Mike that he still needs to do that. Because the language is here. I had talked to him about it in terms of whether or not, this was prior to our discussion here, obviously, whether or not we should take that out. And he said, no, he will develop. Okay. So that's the expectation that he will. Going on. Thank you, Tom. Uh, for that clarification. I guess I wasn't uncomfortable with the word authorities, but it's, because it's been there for so long. Uh, A, anything, you didn't offer any changes, Scott, and neither did Tom. B, same thing, down at C.
I edited.
Instead of saying childcare, you're saying daycare.
Well, it's child daycare.
Oh, child daycare.
It's what's, it's what's in the definitions. So I just matched. You, you got day dash care? That's how it's in. Oh, that's how, okay, because I looked it up and it's, it can either be, it's generally becoming a one word, word, like daycare is one word. But if it's already written as day dash care throughout the rest of ours. Make sure.
Yeah.
Running through.
Yeah, so on on page four oh four of the definitions, what's defined is child day dash care.
Yeah.
I thought. We've got definitions.
Well, it's consistent with what we have in our document anyway. All right. Tom suggested we delete the et cetera. At the end of that.
In fourth, it's not in fourteen, so.
I don't know why it was there. The ETC.
Other bodies of water.
It's just always been there, probably. Yeah, I guess maybe there to cover anything that we had.
Yeah, mostly we've got creeks. Maybe that was to cover. Creeks and. Ditches or whatever. That fill with water.
Do we leave the EDC?
In those, those. Those. Fake constructed ponds, the drainage.
Retention ponds.
Kids are always drowning in them, it seems like.
Especially in the winter time, so you try to walk on the ice.
So do you wanna make it clear that these are not just natural lakes and ponds we're worried about? Also retention ponds? Are we also concerned with like creeks and rivers and streams or?
Oh, we're saying hazardous. Where is this hazardous conditions such as?
Such as.
And you can just go on forever.
Because the, when they go to get their their certificate of occupancy, somebody is gonna look to see that it's a safe. I I'm thinking that somebody, the buil- the building department or someone's gonna say, oh, you've got.
I really don't see a re- a need to delete the ETC though.
Such as kinda covers. Just examples, there could be more, so you don't need it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and do we wanted to, it it what, uh, why not do EG then instead of such as?
Cause such as is already in there.
That's all right, no, I don't want to debate it anymore. If everybody wants to leave, leave it out, that's fine. I just wanna make sure that um we're trying to ma- uh be all inclusive here. Oops, can't say that word.
You're censored.
What can't we?
Uh, prohibited uses.
Oh, oh, I was like, was there a memo or something that I missed something?
Yeah, there was.
Nothing under A, B, or C.
Yeah, I just.
Paragraph at the top of um.
So nice to have page numbers in it.
Yes, it is.
I'm trying to remember.
So on page three of Tom's, he added F there.
I like that, that's great.
I've also changed in the very top line, section twelve point oh three. C rather than E, this is number.
You got rid of that, yeah.
Yeah. We added F. No drive through facilities of any kind shall be permitted.
Period.
And that's a period, the rest of that, just delete, that's not part of it. That was Tom's uh reference back. All right, twelve oh six. Building size.
So what, what's in red with no underline with Scott? And what's? And what's in red, so all of these are are Scott's changes, what's in red with with underline is mine. Well, it didn't come out blue on me.
Yeah, and that red stuff that Scott did is what we talked about last time.
Yes.
Right.
So that should all be fine.
Well, you put right away, you put the dashes there and they got it.
The suggested changes, everybody's fine with page three then?
Yeah, the only other thing that that Tom added was uh dashing right of way. I think other places.
Uh, I.
But most places, I don't think we use dashes.
I think most places we actually do use dashes, I think that was, and we can go back through, but I I don't wanna make a big issue of.
I don't know what the, whatever is appropriate there, Scott. Either with or without the dashes, it's not a big issue, one or the other.
Right away supposed to be hyphenated?
I'll write a note to check.
It says either way.
There's more of in your goat, and I'll pick the one that's there's more of.
Yeah.
Unless you wanna change.
I think legally, we'd be safe either way.
Either way, yeah.
I can't even.
Yeah, then we had talked about that other change that's under H for screening. Uh, and I believe there's nothing else on that page then, page three. Whoops. All right, going on under L. Adequate sized.
Well, that was, that was the change we made last.
Right.
Last month.
Strike through on that.
We had discussion about that previously.
Yep.
Yeah, I've now marked it out, so at some point we must have.
Yeah, so that was supposed to.
I guess I missed it, cause I marked it out with my hand, but.
That was supposed to be deleted, okay, uh, and then uh M for landscape plan. At the discretion of the zoning inspector, and we ch- agreed on that previously also.
Okay.
So that takes. Through.
We motion well. Do something?
More big motion on twelve?
Well, Scott will make those changes and then we'll see the final version.
Okay.
There aren't any changes.
Thank you, Bernie.
There are not many changes.
Oh, no, not.
Except the ones that Tom provided, and then.
Not tonight.
Then we're done, right?
Uh, and Scott's gonna pick those up and put them in the next draft.
Okay.
Kind of the next workshop meeting, potentially, we could be in a position to say, okay, we're ready to move this forward. To a hearing.
That should be the plan, so this is the final draft.
Well, the next one will be, yes. This is almost the final draft. Okay, so then now we go on to uh fourteen.
Here again, we talked about some of this in our last meeting. And then I just recast the first sentence aligned with what I did in twelve, so that it's no longer in the future tense. But otherwise, the wording is pretty similar.
Anything under fourteen oh two application was things that we talked about last time or Tom capitalized resolution is the last word. That's all the same as we did last time.
Yeah.
Okay, permitted uses. Your highlighted things are things you just wanted to bring up?
The highlighted things here, we're all talking about. Totally within building, within closed building, without leaving your car, and then later on down in. F, we have outdoor patios, and we have. Other drive through, financial institutions.
They draw conditional.
Those are conditional uses. So.
Not sure they should be conditional uses.
So the question, I I mean, that was my question, and I I didn't have an answer for it, is do we wanna? Maintain closed as a permitted use or 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 not allow outdoor uses as a permitted use, but to allow them as a conditional use?
Does having them as a conditional use give us more like visibility to? What that would look like, like in terms of screening and stuff like that? Not really, no. It requires, yeah, it goes to the BZA and they make decisions. But if they go to the BZA, wouldn't they have to like present a plan and be like, this is what it's going to look like, this is how we're going to screen it? Or is that not part of the process? Sometimes. I've never been to the BZA, so I don't know. I'm just.
Take a look at the property down here at the intersection of Gorsuch and and Harlem. The BZA has approved that.
I'm not familiar with it, but okay, I'll take a look.
The guy's operating a garage. And my understanding is that they approved it. And he's supposed to be limited to having four vehicles outside, there's eight right now. Uh, some of them are clearly junk vehicles.
Right, parts.
Had a ju- inspector enforcement issue then or no?
Yeah, he's working on it already.
Yeah, right, but.
Yeah, he's spoken.
There's no screen, there was no screening or anything like that, that was addressed in terms of the BZA expecting that, that's all, that's the reason I brought it up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Mike's aware, and he told me the same thing that I actually say, that, you know, it.
Essentially, they were told they could have because he's working on the cars, so it'd be like a. Car.
Yeah.
They had an automobile type of thing. Few that he was working on that were rotating out in the front. And the rest had to be in the back, and I guess all of them are ending up just in the front, and so he's not following that variance. Uh, and so they're kinda discussing what that looks like.
So. There was no screening, it was required at that time. Now, when it comes back, who knows what, uh, I don't know what's gonna happen, but uh.
Well, I mean.
There isn't automatically anything that the be, it would be up to the BZA if they add something.
Well, but the, I mean.
If it's conditional use.
But at least if it's a conditional use, that puts the opportunity. If they choose to. Put some kind of.
But.
Well, we could also say if it was a permitted use, it it is requires screening. Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Be more.
Yeah.
Inclined to. But but there's no like permit situation where it could potentially be revoked if they're not. Following the rules.
Should be part of their conditional, conditional use permit would be the conditions that they need to follow.
Right.
And then the conditional use permit can be revoked.
Right, whereas if it's a permitted use, there's not really anything you can do, so I kind of like leaving it in the conditional uses. It would just be a citation from the zoning inspector, it's in a permitted use.
So you're suggesting, I think, unless I'm misunderstanding Brittany, that we do drop the requirement of being within a closed building.
No, she's suggesting otherwise, she like. Oh, I like that. Conditional use. Personally, she prefers it to be conditional use.
The whole thing.
You know, the, yeah, well, like in fourteen oh four letter F. And the drive through, I guess the drive through thing too, yeah.
So so Mike, fourteen oh three. You have the permitted uses, all of the work has or all of the activity has to be within the building. As a conditional use, we would allow activities outside of the building with a conditional.
For certain, for certain use, for certain.
I I think with commercial stuff, you have to allow. Outdoor displays of some stuff. Well, but I don't think we're talking about outdoor displays, we're talking about.
Outdoor drinking.
Outdoor drinking, eating, drive throughing.
Working on cars and.
Yeah.
So.
I guess the car thing is.
Well, I'm not clear what the recommendations are for fourteen point oh three.
Are you mean fourteen point oh three?
Cause you're talking about fourteen point oh four conditional use.
Well.
Well, between the two.
Where where do we put outside activities? We allow outside activities as a permitted use, or do we only allow them as a conditional use? Uh, I I would lean towards saying if you were, if you're allowing um eating and drinking establishments as a permitted use. That you've. You should allow them to have outdoor eating and drink. Permitted, they don't have to get any anybody else's permission after that. You're saying, no, let them come back for permission if they want to, if they wanna do that, then at least there's some conditions. If the BZA decides they wanna put conditions, and if not, then there's no.
They don't have to, but they could.
Yeah, but they don't.
Oh.
But the phrase is providing appropriate screening is included, so at least there's direction there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Looking for it.
Okay.
As really in the straight district. You might want that screening. But you, I mean, unless it's just in your general landscape standards, which is hard to be that specific.
So I think what we're coming down to is for fourteen oh three. Everything, everything will be conducted within a closed building is where we're.
What about C?
We're just gonna ignore all the highlighted stuff.
The new, the new C recreational facility? So all like basketball courts. Has to be, if you have a recreational facility.
It's like Glenn's um.
Ice rink has to be totally indoor. Yeah, miniature golf, it's not gonna be indoor.
Well, maybe we'd have somebody that wants to have a bar, and then they wanna have a sand volleyball court.
Exactly.
And it's a conditional use.
Or now they're doing it, I understand, I haven't observed one anywhere, but I'm I understand that some of the bars are setting up pickleball courts.
Be interesting to watch.
People playing after they've been drinking, yeah, that would could be very interesting.
They have all, they have outdoor and indoor volleyball courts, and they have. Tables, and they serve pizza and beer and things like that.
But I I think in the interest of. Not. Per, you know, not creating disruption to maybe surrounding residences. Wouldn't it be? Wise to have that as maybe a conditional use, so there could be more conditions put around it to. Maintain the, you know. Reduce environmental pollution, if you will, in terms of noise, sound, light, you know, disturbances to the surrounding properties.
I'm just trying to think if there's a, if there's an inherently outdoor use that.
Bakeries.
Outdoor, and we're saying to have that use, I'm I'm trying to think of what one of those inherently outdoor functions would be. Recreation is the one that comes to mind, but um.
If you have an ice cream shop, a lot of them have a couple little tables out front.
Outside.
So if you put a conditional use, you're essentially telling them you have to put bushes in front of people sitting at little tables. I think that that would probably deter people from wanting that property if they have to completely seal in their patio. The last thing I wanna do in the summer is sit on a patio that's completely sealed in. By a fence or bushes or. That's when just sitting outside is being outside. Kind of my thought on that as a.
I also had a question in in this is nowhere in any of this commercial. Article, do we talk about gas or electric charging stations? And I think if we have a have a commercial district.
And I think if we have, have a commercial district, you gotta have, be allowing a gas station. Or charge, electric charging stations or something.
I mean, this isn't the only commercial district we have though.
Trying to capture everything. These are leftover parcels that may not fit in a planned commercial. District.
Yeah, that's basically what this is.
Land commercial district, obviously you have more. Flexibility to buffer and.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think gas stations were mentioned in our planned districts either.
I think automobile oriented uses, I think are in some of potential.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'd have to go back and look, but I think call repair was. Was not specifically mentioned as a permitted use. Which was surprising to me, but it's the way that, it's the way it went.
It still could potentially be approved through a planned, uh, district though.
Yeah, yes.
Even though it may not be mentioned, because if there's the generic out that's provided.
Tom, you're talking about overlays?
Yeah, so what we're, we're coming down to here is the question, do we want to allow outdoor seating?
Or change and.
As a permitted use. For certain kinds of businesses, or are we going to require all outdoor use? To fall under the idea of it being a conditional use. Having to go to the B Z A, so they get approval for a neighborhood commercial district and then they have to go to the B Z A. As another fee to get approval for a small patio that they want to put in.
Lawn and garden, equipment sales, like the lawn and garden, they're gonna have, all their stuff's gonna be outside.
Yeah.
Or like half their inventory is gonna be outside.
If it's lawn and garden, yeah. So.
All the mowers and stuff are gonna be sitting outside.
I mean, if you've, if you're all feeling very strongly about allowing outdoor activities. I think we need to add some verbiage similar to the continual, conditional uses. Um, that requires some kind of screening and. You know, reducing impacts to neighboring properties is mitigated. Yeah, I mean, cause you're, you're, some of the things you're talking about are relatively like low, you know. Low noise, like not, if somebody getting ice cream and sitting out there, but you're not thinking of. The other end of the spectrum that could be very disruptive to the community.
Well, I think even if we left it in under conditional uses, I, I personally inserted. On page six F, if you're gonna have, be providing. Provided, appropriate screening is included and impacts to neighboring properties, including lighting and noise is mitigated. Yeah, I would, would want to include something along those lines.
Or something like such as, so. It doesn't only limit to lighting and noise, I don't know, it could be smells or, who knows, but. Yeah, I think that's fair verbiage to add.
Not sure what the suggestion is in that discussion. Are we.
I don't know.
Going to, uh, have under permitted uses, any outdoor, uh, use being permitted? Cause right now it says it's within a closed building.
Yeah, I just don't think a lot of the, the Cs and Ds stuff here is, is. Practical for a totally within an enclosed building. And I happen to, to like eating on patios.
In the summertime?
I wasn't here for all the discussion and history, but it, it is a neighborhood, so what was the thought on what this looks like? Cause I'm, maybe that's where I'm, and I think about the neighborhood is driving things inside to avoid crossover with neighbors. I mean, you think about, that, that's what I'm reading as I look at it, but I don't know what the history was, you guys. Been chatting about this for a little longer than I've been here, but. Is, is that part of why it's in the building? It's in a neighborhood?
Yeah, but I could also see like this, I go back to the lawn and garden, you could have a little Ace Hardware store. That has half their inventory, like in the summertime, they put half their stuff outside. Probably in the back or over on the side with maybe a fence around it or whatever, but it's still in a neighborhood, people are gonna walk to it, they're gonna. You know, buy their. Plants or things there.
Yeah.
Um, so you'd want that, I think you'd want that to be outside, maybe we could still have that a conditional use.
Well, that's where I'm headed, because if you did a conditional use on that, if for whatever reason, the nature of the business changes and it starts to be a problem with the neighbors. Like it, now they're working on mowers outside, right? Now they're test driving mowers and it's in a neighborhood. You have the ability to pull that back with the conditional use. Uh, I understand where, where going Brittany.
Test a lawnmower in my yard, I'd let him.
Well, that's a bad example for Joni, I get it. But I, but I do understand your questions, Brittany, about what happens when they go for a conditional use permit and it doesn't have conditions and they're just allowed to do it. But even that would get a complaint at some point from neighbors.
I just, we're not saying that they can't do it at all, we're just saying you have to go through the appropriate process, that it has to be reviewed and. Maybe conditions are gonna be applied and I think it's good to give. The township and the community an opportunity to review that part of the business.
Cause if the business changes hands, different people do different things. So you have the ability to have a conditional use reviewed, is what I'm hearing. Where you wouldn't if it was, send the code and five years down the road, you got something different happening. That, that's all I, when I read, that's where I was going with it. That might be completely off base, but.
That's kind of where my mind is going as well. Plan for the worst, but hope for the best.
So I think where we're headed is that fourteen oh three permitted uses indoors period.
Yep.
And fourteen oh four conditional uses. However, we want to write up the outdoor uses and the conditions on the outdoor uses. To mitigate. Whatever impact it has, I'm just making as general as possible, so if somebody says, I don't like this, people having too much of a good time. You know, you just, okay, we don't permit good times.
I think more of the, more of the example would be that it's fine having dinner, but now you have a band out there playing during dinner. And maybe they play till ten o'clock and now you got crossover that doesn't work.
Well, that's why I, I would think even with the outdoor patios that are in the conditional uses that we need to. Include impacts such as lighting and noise.
Most cities have a noise ordinance.
And we don't, we don't have.
But I don't know if you guys have a noise ordinance here at a certain time.
No, we don't, we do not have a noise ordinance in the township.
I know with somewhere even as a village, they have a noise ordinance, they had to shut down festivals and stuff, so I'm sure sound checks out those.
So.
Nope.
Restating what, uh, Tom sort of summarized there. We will leave the language in fourteen oh three as is.
Yep.
Within the closed building and will add F. Under, uh, conditional uses, so that for eating and drinking establishments, they can have an outdoor patio. But they have to apply for it as a conditional use.
Lighting and noise are added as in that phrase.
Yep.
Yeah.
Impacts to neighboring properties such as lighting and noise.
And they can also, they can also store products for sale, they can store goods outside, all those are.
Outside, outside storage. Yeah, I almost feel like.
Those are all conditional.
P and F could be merged, outdoor patios and outdoor storage of goods.
What about B? Outdoor storage of products for sale, merge that in as well.
I, I put B and E together and keep F maybe a little separate.
Out, outside display of products.
Yeah, cause if you're displaying products, you don't necessarily want to screen them all the way, right?
Yeah, B and E are good together.
Okay, well, we don't have the exact wording, but Scott's making notes there that she's gonna work on that, correct Scott?
Yes.
And, and does nobody else want to add gas or electric charging stations as a conditional use in? This, commercial districts?
Yeah, uh. Add a gas station?
Gas station than electric charging station.
Is it permitted use or condition?
Conditional.
I don't think there's anything to prevent, I mean, I, charging station's almost like a utility, so. I don't. I don't feel like there's anything here that would prohibit that, but opening the door to a Shell gas station. Just going on the corner, I, I don't know, that's what you want to do.
Is that? What?
No offense to Shell. Is that a example? I didn't say.
So we're not, we're, okay, so we're not, as a permitted use, we're not allowing any drive through facilities, a gas station would be considered a drive, drive through?
No.
Uh, if you called it out and wanted it separately, I think you'd be okay to have both.
Yeah.
Well, if there's. I guess one way to address it was you would list it specifically as a permitted item under A. If you feel strongly that it needs to be there, but I hear Scott saying he doesn't see anything in here that would prohibit it.
This is not gonna be standalone, right? Charging, that's two different issues, I guess.
Usually now every gas station is like a convenience store.
Yeah, like you could have a, you could put a charging station in any of these locations.
Uh, banks often have them.
Yeah.
But banks also have drive through thingies. Which moves them into the conditional use.
Yeah.
I just wouldn't see a gas station fits the atmosphere and opportunities developed small neighborhood oriented shopping areas, that would not. Fit for me, gone are the days of a one or two pump station. The old days where you'd pull up and. Yeah, yeah, that's what I, you know, if you had that, that would fit more that neighborhood's small, but that's not what we have today in gas stations.
No, the gas stations, they all have, gosh, who knows how many pumps?
From inside and, and look at Buc-E's, it's like a warmer.
Yes, small neighborhood oriented shopping is not Bucky, but I'm not, but even so.
Get in the Buc-E's, but.
You, you need, you need, I think you need scale to put something like that in, it can't be a one pump.
Okay, so in, also in letter D, um, with the, so the conditional use of allowing a drive through. Um, do we want to put a kind of a general condition on that as well? Similar to F, you know, providing impacts such as noise and lighting to neighborhood properties is mitigated. Just some like verbiage.
Is any of that in the development standards?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I don't.
Reading the development standards. Fourteen oh six has.
But that's just for trash collection.
Wouldn't have to be.
It wasn't until we, I think we.
Screening, screening of shrubbery is under H. That's to hide trash collection and service areas from you.
So I guess K kind of already. K already addresses lighting. I don't think we have anything that addresses. No, it's necessarily. I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm.
We did put something, there's something general in the development standards about. Noise now.
But not in these development standards.
No, no, I'd be. Into general development standards, which are applicable to all these.
Oh, okay, okay.
Let's see what it says, I don't remember, that was what we added Scott, remember that's the new language, something in there. Noise, vibration, et cetera.
Oh, well, I mean, we relocated all that, I don't think that's what, that wouldn't capture screening.
Oh, I, I don't think we, yeah, no, I, I think we're good on screening, I think one more just thinking noise and lighting, which I think we have lighting addressed. More specifically.
Well, we added it, let's. Oh no, that's just, there's lighting there. There. Stand corrected, I thought we added that. Is that the ones that got, that they?
Yeah, I mean, it's just noise standards that the O E P A should be adhered to, I thi- I think it. That gets to not just annoying, but like earth shaking.
Yeah, that really would, you know, somebody has a band outside on the patio for diners.
Yeah, that wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be.
Big industrial noise is.
No, the standards for regulating external impacts, but it wouldn't. Vibrations and noise, no uses shall be located and no equipment shall be installed in such areas to produce intense. Earth shaking vibrations which are dissimulable without instruments at or beyond the property line of the subject premises, noise standards of O E. P A shall be adhered to.
Yeah, those are just like industrial level noises, they're, they're not. The kinds of things you would encounter.
I mean, we do have some noise standards in some of the other, uh. Articles, I feel like there's noise standards.
Yeah, so that, that language is not, I didn't know, couldn't remember what the wording was, but, uh, I agree with what you're saying.
Noise.
Not necessarily suitable to these, uh, uses.
Yeah. We have it in the alternative energy systems, I think. Not, yeah, you know, I'd say there's verbi- verbiage in that, not necessarily applicable to commercial, but. In terms of.
So are we suggesting that we have? An N added here then that would deal with noise? Neighborhood commercial district C two.
Oh, and, oh, like an N in the development standard?
Yeah. Yeah, well, uh, let's see, that's under conditional uses, that's not in the right place, sorry. It would be under N, it would be, uh.
No, you're right, Mike, under development standards.
Yeah, development standards, I guess.
No, you're right on N.
Well, if it's a conditional use, yeah, that's where you would put it.
And then, no.
Development standard period. For.
Yeah.
Fourteen oh six.
In for noise.
And, yeah.
Fourteen oh six development standards, it is in, you know.
Yeah.
I was.
You were right, you were right the first time.
Confusing myself here.
I see that.
All right, so if we would add, so we're gonna add potentially here, another section that will say something about noise. Something about.
Gonna be quiet.
What are we gonna say?
Add something about.
Silent.
I'll, I'll look around for, especially when there's no noise ordinance in the township.
Yeah, I mean, something in relation to, you know, the decibels at. You know, the property line or something like, you know what I mean?
Who's gonna measure the decibels of property?
The right, the right favors of the right circumstances, we'll measure the decimal at the property line.
You're absolutely right.
I knew you'd get, you'll get there eventually, but just put the, put yourself there.
My watch tells me that it's too loud.
Yeah.
Yes, they could.
Oh, your watch will do it then.
Yeah.
It's too loud.
All right, Scott, I've got a question, um.
I don't have.
So if we have a, let's say we have a, an instant oil change that wants to. Be on the corner of somewhere. Is that a drive in or drive through? It's a car, car maintenance facility. What do they do? The work is being done inside the building. But it's. They have to drive in.
Wow, it's auto oriented though. I don't think they can locate here.
So auto oriented.
We've got car repair.
Car repair facilities as a permitted use.
I was trying to read it.
Yeah, I mean, it, it wasn't in originally.
Oh, right, well, I keep meaning to wait until there's a lull to go back to C and D.
All right.
We should have let you start.
We should go back to C and D then and figure.
Well. You drive into it, but the work is done in it.
Well, but as, but then you go to the next one, drive through or drive in facilities as a conditional use. It mentions. It mentions things, financial and restaurants, but it doesn't, and other retail, but it doesn't mention.
Other businesses.
Other.
Or other similar retail.
And, and then it, on the prohibited, no drive through facilities of any kind. But it also references, so it's like, not allowed, it is allowed, it's not allowed, like.
Well, the original one that just used other businesses, it would be allowed, but if we change it to Tom's. Or other similar retail establishments, but meaning similar to financially restaurants, then it wouldn't be. Cause it's not really similar to those.
Right.
Do you wanna, you wanna add something like?
I don't hear what Scott has to say about that. C and D first before we get too far.
I mean, I don't. Again, I mean, the whole, the question of what does neighborhood mean? It may not be in a neighborhood. Even though that used to be the way we did things, but. Near neighborhood or neighborhood scale, I guess is what we're settling on. I don't know that miniature golf courses. I don't think we need to worry about ice rinks. We have, trying to look at C.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have a. Resident who wanted to put an ice rink in the township. She tried real hard. And now she's got an ice rink and a miniature golf course in Newark. Newark, in Newark. So, um. I mean, that's partly where it came from, is that, you know. It's. It was hard for her to find a way of doing it here. Well, and it sounds like we do have, in the middle of a neighborhood, we do have a car repair facility. Just down the street, that. Person's doing car repair right there between. In and around residential.
Yeah, there are residences all around it.
Yeah, so that's happening.
And that was, it's operating as a, um. You know, in, in home or, uh, you know. A business.
Expanded use or.
And, and what is.
It's not, it's not operating as a commercial.
But there's also that car repair place on. East Robbins.
Yes.
Yeah, there's one over there that they've approved, and it's still not, it's not, it's still not operating as a commercial, so.
It's not.
No, not commercial zoning.
Okay, I mean, something like an ice rink is, and even a miniature golf course, that's kind of usually a large establishment. And the, you know. There are other. Commercial articles and districts and overlays and stuff that could apply to a large. Um, commercial business like, like that. Um, where I thought, you know, this is limited, this is. I thought kind of the idea behind these two were those smaller parcels allowing people to develop. You know, smaller neighborhood businesses on those smaller parcels.
Requiring two acres.
Yeah, that's not that.
Yeah, minimum big of a space, but. Yeah, that's.
Be hard to put an ice rink in.
Ice rink would be larger than.
I mean, it would, yeah, it would definitely be larger. I don't know if we're saying that we don't want ice rinks or we're good with ice rinks, I don't know, it's just. Kind of.
I mean, that's. We're gonna focus on ice, ice rinks a lot here. That's a lot of traffic in and out. Is miniature, I mean, I don't know, are you sad that you lost that person? Or is it just like, good for Newark?
I mean, I, I, I personally would have, would have preferred that she. Run her business here where she lives. But she couldn't find a place to do it, even though, you know, there were a lot of suggestions falling around. But her financial backers were not comfortable with what she had here. They found an existing, they found an existing building in Johnstown, it fell through, they found one in Newark, she's up and running. Now, you know, I, I don't wanna make zoning decisions on the basis of one example, but I'm saying. We shouldn't eliminate so many things that people can't. You know, follow their. You know, and I mean, her case, she was, she was an Olympic.
I mean, do we have to specify it, it's, an ice rink is a recreational facility.
It's, it's listed in here as a permitted use, so.
Well, I mean, oh, it was already in there?
Was it, I think I just asked. Oh, well, it's in there now.
Yeah, and again, we're talking about ice rinks. Too much. But if she had a house and she wanted to build an ice rink next to it, like, I know plenty of people that have a commercial sized gym on the side. On the side of their, I mean, she could have done that as an accessory building. And then had people over, right, but is she running a business? Okay, well, but you don't want that in a C two, right, you don't want. Fairly intense. I mean, not that it would be like. Yeah, the chiller, which is like. Take your life in your own hands when you drive into the parking lot, cause there's so much activity.
Yeah, but she competes with chiller. So, I mean, whether she's that size, I don't, I don't know. Um, you know, I, I mean, I, it, it's, I think it's a difficult decision, it's a question we've talked about, you know, local community. Local neighborhood, you know, what are we talking about, just? Part of the township or to serve the entire township but not serve the surrounding area? I, I'm not, I don't, I'm not clear in my own mind.
You know, I, I would be more comfortable. Splitting some of these things out, some of these things, like. You know, health spas and exercise and dance studios and stuff. Are easily kept inside a building, they're not really big, they don't have class sizes that are that large that there's gonna be a ton of traffic. But other things like the ice rinks and golf courses kind of things. Putting them under conditional uses. So that there, there are. Some other. Conditions that go with them. Uh, more care for traffic control and stuff.
I think that's a fair suggestion.
Or ice rinks and miniature golf courses. You're thinking in terms of that becoming a conditional use?
Yeah, things that are larger like that. I mean, I suppose you could also have like indoor batting cages, but most of them are outdoors.
And most of them are.
So it might just be a matter of splitting up recreational type. Businesses.
Just for reference, this is the ice rink he's talking about. It is a full blown.
Is that the mast, that's mastodon?
Uh, this is Lou and Gibb Reese.
Hers is called mast.
That's a newer.
Mastodon. I think it's a half rink.
But either way.
Still, I mean, they're still poppy sized. If you look at those pictures, I mean, that's roughly that same size. They have the junior leagues playing.
I think, uh.
Still a big space, you would need the whole two acres for that, for sure.
I mean, I'm putting ice, like recreational facilities, ice rinks, miniature golf courses in the conditional uses. I think that still allows them, um, maybe that's a good compromise to.
I'd be fine with that.
Okay. So we can keep health spas, exercise and dance studios, indoor playgrounds.
Okay, so we're gonna take the recreational facilities.
Ice rinks and miniature.
Ice rinks and miniature golf courses and make those conditional.
Yep.
We might even recreational facilities such as. Ice rinks and miniature golf courses.
Yeah, add that to the list of conditional uses.
Where?
You just add another letter?
We have to add another letter. Under four, we've got, we're up to F. So we'd be adding G, I guess.
Oh, it'll be F, cause we're gonna combine B and E.
Where, where do we land?
Oh yeah, we were combining some of those.
B and E.
On the Valvoline instant oil change? What did we say that was?
Do we wanna?
Use or a conditional use?
Well, do we wanna put something in, like in D? The conditional uses to add, like. So we've got financial institutions, restaurants, similar retail establishments, do we wanna put like?
Car repair.
Like, car, yeah. Automobile oriented. Uses or something like that. In there as a conditional use.
You know that. Recreations, and then we're putting.
Automobile service facility.
With service institution.
How do you, what makes sense?
Where did you want that again?
In D, with the drive through or drive in facilities. Or. Think about financial institutions, restaurants.
You're taking the car repair facilities. I mean, that's under right now, Tom's proposed it does change under permitted uses, and you're gonna take it out and make it a conditional use, correct? Is what you're suggesting.
Oh, well, I think it was more of the. Application of the drive in car repair facility versus just.
Like, almost all car, car repair is gonna be drive into a, a building, they close the door, they do the work, and then they pull it back out and you're done. But a place like a tire shop. Or a instant oil, I guess tire shop maybe. Car repair, like instant oil, you drive in and then you drive on through, it's a drive through.
Yeah, at least a drive, in a sense, it's drive through, but.
It's like drive in, drive through, works done.
Works done inside.
But the, the doors may stay open.
Doors may stay open.
Parking in between, you know, until, until you can go and get it. There's a lot of, a lot more impact than just.
So maybe remove.
You're not talking about car repair facilities and you're just talking about.
I'm talking about the ones that are more.
Drive through kind of.
Drive through car service where you don't have to get out of the car, you stay in the car while they do the work and then. So if, if you say, you know, a quick oil change is, is, is okay as a conditional use.
Right.
Uh, but not car repair, we'd have to. Car repair is already a permitted use. Um, in a car wash.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, not necessarily. Scott's still not liking.
Well, not until you all decide.
I mean, why don't we remove it from permitted uses and just make, because I feel like. It's some, in any car repair situation, you're gonna have to drive in.
Yeah.
One way or another, so just take it out of the permitted uses, add it to the drive through, drive in facilities line.
Just add it to its own letter.
Or give it a letter, great, sure.
No, whether you're driving or not, they have an impact. And so you might as well just think, okay. But and conditional is good because. Yeah, all services is gonna be inside, whether it's in or through. May have neighbors that you need to mitigate, and so that's good.
Okay.
So getting back, the quick oil change was a conditional use.
Yeah, along with. And what Brittany was just suggesting is the car repair facilities, remove the whole thing.
Yeah.
And that would have picked up any.
Right.
And then Scott.
Car service operation.
And so Scott said add a new letter to conditional uses to pay car.
Yeah.
So our car wash.
We're adding one, uh, an additional letter for recreational uses, and we're adding an additional one for. Uh, car services.
Car service.
Services, or automobile services.
That would be recreational facilities, ice rinks, miniature golf facilities, and then G would be car repair facilities.
Auto, auto services?
Repair and service.
Auto repair services.
Was it?
Should I put comma?
Of what Tom had suggested under. Approved, or permitted rather, and moving it to a, a conditional.
Yeah. Yeah, so, all those things.
Do we wanna, so automobile oriented services?
But that includes like gas stations.
Okay.
Y'all didn't want it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, aw, shoot, Tony.
And car washes. Unless you've got.
Maintenance.
Sewers that. Aren't just sanitary sewers, but are overflow sewers, you can't do car washes environmentally.
Not environmentally, no, too much. Pollution coming off the car and soap. Wax.
I, I'm hi, I'm fine leaving car washes out.
So we'll call it auto repair services as we.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna add those two as conditional uses and taking them out of the list of permitted.
Sure, so it's the final wording for the automobile.
Good question.
Auto repair services, I think Scott's got it.
Auto figuring out.
I think I'm gonna have to say accept fuel. Except refueling stations.
Right now, we're, we're settling on auto repair services until. If you find a, a better wording for that, Scott, great, bring it to us on the next draft. We got recreational uses and auto, uh, repair services that we're adding.
Snag there, but now we're moving again.
Okay, and then that leaves, um. Health spas, exercise, exercise, dance studios, indoor playgrounds. As an item and computer sales and, um. Repair facilities, lawn and garden sales and service. Is that all staying in?
Yeah.
Alright. Under the permitted uses, okay. And then, uh, I'm not exactly sure what we decided, I, we had talked about adding an N.
The noise, no, that's.
Under conditional uses for noise. No, that's what I mean. I said conditional uses, but it's under development standards, fourteen oh six in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We never finalized that.
No, Scott's gonna look something up.
Yeah.
Can you just work on some wording for that, Scott?
I'm gonna try.
I mean, alright, I just wanted to know how we were leaving it.
The idea is that we wanna make. Sure, that. None of these commercial uses have. Noise that impacts neighbors, so.
Yes.
Yes. Um, some of the wording, I don't. For lighting that we have, talks about, you know, lighting going on to the neighbor's property at. Uh, such and such a distance and so many, uh, lumens, uh, or, or some kind of a measurement. Maybe we could do something similar to that with noise.
Lighting this section doesn't, doesn't have any details like that.
No, it doesn't. What we just, I'm talking about, I don't mean in there, I just mean in some of the, uh, overlay districts, we have that kind of wording in places.
Didn't we just approve something for bandit properties that had some pretty good language for lighting and noise?
Or which property?
Bandit properties.
Oh.
We had lighting and noise related. Stipulations that.
For lighting, I'm not sure about the noise.
Pretty sure there was noise, but I, cause that was the one where decibels were measured at, at the property line. And it, it was, it was limited to a certain level that was, um, that was. Equal to like a conversation.
That's the kinda thing that I'm thinking about.
We, we have that language that we just approved for that.
Maybe we could use, I don't have it with me.
Maybe Jody does, she's looking at me.
I do have it at home, we could.
If not, you've got the approved, you've got the approved plan that we approved, right?
Yeah, I have it at home too, but I know I don't have it with me. I'm not seeing, no for sure, let me look.
X twenty, that's twenty? Nah, it was too big to carry around.
Is that a planned, commercial rezoning?
There's a planned commercial district that, that we approved about two months ago and. Ashley's gonna go grab it and provide it.
I mean, there's. In, uh, wind energy systems, we have. Noise. Shall not exceed sixty decibels as measured at the closest property line. I don't know if that's, I don't know what sixty decibels is, I don't know if that's applicable, but something similar to that, maybe.
Vibrations and noise. Vibrations and noise. No uses shall be located and no equipment shall be installed in such a way as to produce, no, this isn't gonna be it. Intense earth shaking vibrations which are discernible without instruments are beyond the property line. Voice standards of the EPA should be. That's not good enough for this.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what we've already developed the standards.
Yeah. That that's from Bandit.
I know, but it's the same language, it's in development center.
Yeah.
Can't be of much more help on that, Scott. Alright, well, that takes us, I think. Um. We have to go back. We never addressed. Uh, prohibited uses. On page seven. Alright, on page six, uh, and uh.
Page seven in Tom's.
Page seven on Tom's. We didn't have any changes except. I'm sorry, I was gonna say the only changes is one that Tom's added, no drive through facilities of any kind shall be permitted. Except as provided in.
Yeah, we just changed that. That number might not be right anymore.
Right. It says as provided in section fourteen point oh four D, but I don't think that number's right.
Well, it's still fourteen oh four and the level. Whatever it comes down to.
Yeah.
Correctives are still the.
Except that's provided. The language would be the same and then the only thing that might be different would be the D at the end.
Correctives are still the.
Yeah.
Yeah, still gonna be section fourteen oh four.
But it's still the.
Yeah.
Okay. Any activity on the property outside of permitted hours of operation shall be limited to ensure no audible noises generated that can be heard from neighboring residential property. Noise of sixty decibels or greater outside of these hours of operation shall be violation of this development plan. So we we do have. Something that you could. Yeah. Pull out and put it in there. Maybe not referencing the hours of operation, but. Well, maybe it is during hours of operation, none of. That can correct. I don't see anything lighting. Like else wrong. But I'll look.
Back to, well, kind of go back. There's a reference under. Don't make it lose people, under prohibited uses about. Manufacturing mobile office structure. Except as permitted by fourteen oh three E. Which is the same place, but it looks like you took the letter E out. Um, was that because it felt like that was? A note and not. It would be permitted use. Fourteen oh three E. But somehow the E. Deleted, is that a mistake, maybe?
I think you still need that E.
Yeah.
The paragraph is still there, but the letter E itself.
Right.
Has been.
It'd be the bottom of page five. Um, deleted E, but I think it needs to go back.
Top of Tom's page six.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's printed, okay.
You see.
This is.
Oh, you page six, E up there?
Mm-hmm.
You see, you see, okay.
He is on the top of page six.
Okay.
Yeah. That'd be quick. Because for me. Is, okay.
That's got the.
Um, you weren't saying remove letter E.
Oh.
E.
Yeah.
I think so.
I I didn't even know if that was was mine.
It was not removed.
Okay.
Now, we had deleted some of the other. Under under permitted, but under uh, combined, we were combining.
Yeah, we can move on, that was just.
Yeah.
That's, that's fine.
Okay, so we got that, so now we're, we've addressed the prohibited uses. Uh, development standards. We have already moved to that from with some of our discussion, the other items that are there. Um, we didn't make any revisions in that except for lot size.
Yeah.
And then we, what we were just discussing about noise to be added.
Uh, we did make some changes in screening, and Scott is.
We got some changes in screening.
Which are already there.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I overlooked that. There are uh, some wording changes there. Just minor kinds of things.
Talking about, talking about screening, again. Um. Wanted to go back to uh, fourteen oh four, I think it's F, the afterlau patios. Uh, where Ashley had made the comment that, you know, nobody's sitting in kind of a. A screened off area, should be able to look at it. So we can, we can remove appropriate screening is included and just. Providing impacts to neighboring properties is mitigated. Um, and if that requires screening, then that becomes part of what you need, but we're not saying you have to screen it if. Part of view is part of the. Why people want to sit up.
Thank you so much.
I mean, I don't know if we need to review, remove it, I think. App, doesn't appropriate kind of give some leeway of whether. It's appro, you know, how much is appropriate, maybe. None.
But if you're, it, I mean, I take your point, I I'm just saying if if it's, if it's in. If it's in the resolution this way, then somebody assumes that I gotta have some kind of screening when. Appropriate, I.
But but right, all appropriate, given that the impacts are mitigated, so it does, if you don't need it. Why we, if you don't need to mitigate, why would you need it? That that's what I read.
So it's okay to leave it in.
Yeah.
Well, right now, the only.
Nothing to mitigate, there's no need to do, but if there's a, if there's that residential property within a hundred feet, probably some mitigation. Necessary.
Yeah, it should be, because under the general development standards, that's only addressing it with regard to um. Um. You know, trash collection areas and service areas. We didn't add the language there for, uh, you know, patios, restaurant patio. So. There wouldn't be any requirement anywhere for screening regarding the patio if it's not included where you said. Where where we have it now.
Except that it. Except that it specifically says. Appropriate screening is included.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, we would, we would leave it rather than taking it out.
Okay, just have, you know, um. Provided impacts to neighboring properties are mitigated.
Okay.
But it it's the same either way.
Okay, I think that part's.
Okay.
Leave it the way that it is pretty much, um. Okay, then for the rest of the development standards, yeah.
That's it.
No additional changes, except that we're adding. An in for noise.
Also gave him the the lighting, um, standard that we approved for Bandit has more. More language than what we have here with the lighting, so he can take a look at that and see if it. Makes sense, because it does deal with neighboring neighboring properties and.
Okay.
More, it's more of a neighborhood friendly lighting standards.
Yeah, right now, it just says that the lighting intensity or brightness shall not be objectionable to surrounding areas.
The the lighting on the, on the P C D that we approved is is written such that it's more.
More specific.
Favorable to neighborhood, neighborhood uses.
Yeah.
So, he's gonna take a look at that. He's gonna.
So you've got the additional information, you have provided that to Scott, am I correctly?
Yeah.
Okay. So you can use that and Scott in relationship to maybe as you work on the wording for the lighting. And for the uh, noise. Well, that, uh, in terms of uh, fourteen, twelve and fourteen. Next time. We should be able to finalize it. Uh, to the point where we could. Move those forward. We won't have to go back through all this detail again, just checking on the changes that Scott is bringing forward. From this discussion. Okay.
And I have made notes. This whole time on the shared document that you all have, so if you want to go back to it, it's updating in real time. To make sure that all the changes that you guys did talk about, I kind of noted, obviously, you know, it says something about noise. Refer to Bandit. That will be different, but and I'm sure he's probably thought a couple of things that are not here, but just so you guys, if you want to look at the changes that you talked about tonight.
That's good.
I do have them on here, just. Something about.
Alright, and um, we still have some time remaining here. Uh, signs and and billboard language, um. I know. Getting into it in terms of any kind of details at this point. Um. Anybody, I know, I know that Tom has looked through it.
Yeah, and I I, Tom, I saw you add some of the stuff you added are in relation to like the materials of the signs, which I think. Are is good to align that, how much kind of. Uh, in in thinking about the signs. I think I'm thinking back to what John had mentioned about like top branding of the township, if you will. And um, Scott has provided a lot of, you know, some some different examples of signs and in. Setting our sign and billboard, you know, or sign regulations. I think we need to think about what we want that branding to be.
Yeah, and 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 that's, I mean, I took the wording from Scott's. Uh, spreadsheet. Sign comparison working doc. Um, where he mentions a rural design theme was 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 basically what, you know, the branding.
Yeah.
And without having any clear idea about what that should really look like, I just took your your verbiage and stuck it in wherever I thought it was appropriate.
Yeah.
Um, so if we have a better idea about what a rural design theme should look like, and maybe it's not. It that should not be decided here. That we should be decided at a um. At a different level in the township. The people who have more design. Sense than. Certainly than I do.
That's in your overlay, so I figured you knew what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
It's very general.
Yeah.
But I mean, like, looking at some of these signs that he provided, like. You know, the right rug and the G F S and the Aldi, those, when you think rural. That doesn't jive with rural, but like, the med station one, the Fixari family dental isn't, you know, terrible. In relation to what I think about.
You know, like all these.
Um, but. Not that there's anything wrong with these signs, I just don't know if they adhere to what. We kind of envision with this rural residential branding.
And I think it would be hard for the zoning inspector to make a decision on what's appropriate and what's not, if he doesn't have good examples of. What's. What we would like to see. And who makes that decision? You know, you're gonna have an architectural review board, I don't think so.
Well, signage is a whole other. Category of federal. And court decision and regulations that you have to be. You have to be careful not to regulate. Content even I've heard to the effect of. You want to say driveway sign instead of in and out, because then you're saying, well, your content is that it has to say in or out. That's which I think is a silly example, but that is one that in a presentation was. Presented as, you know. Just to comply with the fact that you have to be. Control content. You could just do. Color, size.
I.
Okay, main.
Material.
Counts as a sign and what doesn't. Um. But then be careful about. You can say directional, I guess, as long as you don't say in, enter and exit. And maybe the good thing is to give. Examples and not, I mean, you don't want to try to regulate to the point where all the signs look the same, because.
Like New Albany, for example.
I hate New Albany stuff.
I mean, but that's kind of, you think of that as, it's very branded, right, like, you know, you're in New Albany when you see those signs.
Right.
But.
And and I would almost think, just. Is that, that the nature of the township is more people do what they prefer to do. And so nothing looks the same. And that's kind of the charm of the township, it's just. It's not all, the, it's not, it's not branded and it's not.
And if you can control for size, then you don't get overwhelmed with how. Everything is so different.
And you don't have flashing lights and you don't have wiggly. Flags and but.
When you. Neon colors, wild.
Like rural neighborhood signs, this is what pops up, so you have little ones, you have big ones, they all look so different. Me, I have like something like this, it's gonna look more like a. Like a million dollar. House complex versus like this one that more looks like a little apartment complex off a player, so it's what the one that I lived in looked like.
So when you get right down to it, though. The sign that's out front of the firehouse. Does not fit our. Our.
Our concept.
No, so, but compared to the huge trash sign that was there before, it is a huge improvement. Cause there was literally pieces of paper that people hand wrote and just stuck to the last.
Yeah.
So there was, should should we, re- rather than getting. Going all the way through this. Should we, should we wait a little bit to see how that other, how that other process is gonna play out?
Well.
There there are some things that.
My thing, it basically is, in terms of trying to arrive at. A branding model, so to speak, or concept.
Yeah.
That that's the part that needs to be put on hold.
Right.
That. As far as everything else in signs in this particular article, we could probably continue to work that part forward.
I have.
But the branding piece.
I got a lot of issues with the tampering signs thing.
Well, uh, but that's not having any, that really won't have anything to do with quote the branding issue.
No.
So, uh, that that's what I was gonna suggest, is we take that piece of it and kind of hole off on that.
Yeah.
Because part of it is going to be. And. Related to this group, so this one may not be something we're going to be able to bring to fruition.
Right.
At the same time that we move forward with twelve and fourteen.
The two that we just worked on, those are in pretty good shape, this is gonna take us longer.
Yes, absolutely, that's what I'm thinking. Um. But if we take what Scott's done and then look at what, uh. Uh, Tom has provided for us. We could begin at the next meeting then, as we go through that with Scott to say, okay, well, these are the things that. Uh, in addition to what you've suggested, Scott, that we would want, potentially we want to see another change in this area. But not, when it comes to wherever we're gonna be, I don't know even how we're going to address this issue of quote branding.
I mean, I think.
That's the reason, another reason why I'm thinking it's best to kind of put it all whole, but. That's like the architectural review committee, how are we gonna, you know, we gotta come into some agreement on that, hmm.
Yeah, but i- if, you know, we simply refer to a rural design theme like Scott has. And we use that and we let somebody else fill in the blanks, what does that mean?
Correct, that that, I don't disagree with that, that's fine, but I don't want to try to fill in those blanks now.
No, 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 the only other big question I had, having worked through this is. The article is entitled sign and billboard. The purpose says, purpose of this sign regulation, doesn't say anything about billboard. And it doesn't, nothing says, nothing says anything about billboard until you get to the very end of. Um, the article. And it's abandoned signs and billboards.
Okay, so you're proposing just remove billboard?
Well, I thought of that first, but then if there are any billboards in the township, we have to accommodate them somehow, I don't know that there are.
I don't know, there are either.
Would we, would we call it a sign?
What?
Would we call it a sign?
Is that wording in signs and billboards, is that just typical the way that they all throughout the county?
Probably, I mean, I think when you. When some people think of billboards, it's interstate billboard. Probably, I mean, I think when you, when some people think of billboards, it's interstate billboards.
Yeah, that's usually what you're thinking about.
Maybe archaically, billboard just meant a big sign that's up somewhere.
Right.
So, I mean, that's an easy, we don't have to even discuss that, it could ju- just be sign regulations.
Yeah, and, and.
And I don't think it impacts any existing ones changing the title.
Yeah.
So, then we could just take billboards out of the heading.
And, and then I get down to twelve oh, I think it's twelve oh nine. It's twelve oh eight, general regulations, uh, the following regulation shall apply to all signs located and erected within Harlem Township. Doesn't mention billboards at all. It wa, it is in, but you get to twelve oh nine.
Twenty-two.
I'm sorry, twenty-two oh nine, sorry. Twenty-two oh nine, abandoned signs, it starts to pick up. Talk about signs and billboards. Um, and whether that was, and whether we can remove billboards from there too, I don't know. I thought first, yes, and then I thought maybe we should leave it in case there are, we still wanna regulate them if there are any, we're not gonna allow any new ones.
Well, is a bill, is a billboard a sign?
Well, that's what Scott was.
Yeah, I mean, well, if it's, if it's not otherwise defined, which I would think that.
Now, what about our definitions? Let's see if we've got a.
Anything that's a large structure that identifies the thing with words.
If we've got a separate definition for billboard.
Really shouldn't be, because then you're. You're regulating it through the definition, I don't.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing billboard. With that sign.
I doubt there's even a definition for sign.
Ruth, so we don't include bill.
Uh, by, by the way, right of way in the definitions I just saw is with hyphens. Once.
So if we don't include billboards on here, does that mean they're not permitted? Or that just means they're not regulated?
I don't think taking the word out of.
So it is a sign, a billboard is a sign, that.
Well, between sexually oriented and solar, there's no sign, so we don't have either one.
So we don't have a definition specifically.
So do we need to add a definition?
I don't think we necessarily need one. Um. So insofar as using the word billboard in here, unless there's someone who thinks that otherwise, I think we just take it out. Any reference to that word.
Okay, maybe.
Yep.
Hold it.
And, um, in twenty-two oh two, the classification of signs, we've got four classifications, A, B, C, and D. Signs which require no permit. Signs which require a permit from a zoning inspector. Signs which require a variance from the B Z A, and signs which are required and require no permit. And I was thinking maybe that signs that are required but require no permit should be merged with. So that A and D. Put together, I, I, I don't know.
We're gonna review this next, more next time, right?
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
Oh, yeah, we're not trying to finalize it now, just kind of giving some conceptual areas to address. We now, one thing I guess that we have decided upon is we're gonna drop references to billboard.
Does anybody remember, uh, I mean, apparently there was a lot of discussion about D. Uh. I couldn't believe how much detail was included in there with, if you have a, you have a road, then here's how you're gonna name it before it gets built. And if, after it gets built, and if you have a cab, then here's how you're gonna sign it before it gets built, and then after it's built, and then here's, that, that whole. Signs that are required, but require no permit, the whole D that you mentioned. It's like five different categories, which they could all, it's basically when you're building a house, here's what you do, after you build the house, here's what you do. Um, as you're building a road, you wanna put the name of the future road, and that's really all you have to do, but it goes on for like four pages. I'm just, I'm the only one like it, but I. Sorry, I'm. Everybody's. Twenty-two oh six.
Yeah.
That's page.
Page twenty-seven?
Page fourteen.
Oh, it depends on which, which one you're gonna read, the one with full markup or the one that's.
Okay, the one that's got a full markup.
I think is what he's referring to, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, that's page twenty-seven, and.
And I put him in that table, but then I still ended up having to strike through, that's why I got to be such a mess, so that's why I did the cleaner.
But because it's such a mess, unless we can take the messiness out of it.
Yeah.
It really. Stands alone. I wouldn't wanna mix it in with twenty-two oh six, or whatever it is, twenty-two, twenty-two oh three.
Yes, I'm sure it got added later, and that's why it's.
But Scott, just one thing, um, it says road insight identification signs, but you start with site identification and then go to road. I don't know whether you wanna switch the boxes or switch the title, but just. Maybe there should be some reference in twenty-two oh three, that there are other signs that do not require a permit, but. Those are referred to in twenty-two oh six, so there's some connection between. And that's all I got to. Um. For tonight, yeah.
Or purposes of providing our feedback in and for leading our discussion at, uh, our next meeting. You probably should utilize the full markup version.
Okay.
Because that, that gives you the full picture in terms of what the deletions are gonna be. If we just go with the other version. Scott has removed those deletions, so you can, you know, it, it reduces the volume of the document, but. Um, in order to get the full picture of what's taken out and what is being added, use the full markup. That would then give us all of that information.
So when are we gonna review this? Is the next?
At the next, yeah, we're gonna do that at our next workshop meeting, which is now what I wanna, um. Scott, our next workshop meeting would be, uh, according to the normal schedule, the fourteenth. With the changes that we've addressed here tonight, is it, would that work for you?
It's three weeks.
That's three weeks.
That's, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we'll just leave the workshop meeting and schedule till the fourteenth.
Here. That's still seven thirty?
I beg your pardon?
Still seven thirty.
Seven thirty, yeah.
And we will, what, finalize articles twelve and fourteen then too?
Yeah.
Uh, seven and, and fourteen, or twelve, I'm sorry, twelve and fourteen, yes, we will finalize those.
Set a hearing.
And then we'll begin the discussion on, uh, twenty-two.
Um, Scott, before.
Well, we began it tonight, but what I mean is we go into greater detail side.
On page thirty-three of, uh. The, the full. On twenty-two ten. Um, it says prior to the effective date of this article. Can you, do you have any way to check back and see when this article was first put in?
It was probably when you.
Eighty-eight?
Probably.
Cause we've got, we've got the original version in the zoning office.
Of what?
Of the zoning.
Of the zoning resolution.
We don't need the version, we just, we're just curious what.
Well, I think.
No, we don't need the details, he's just looking at.
Should be a date.
Whether, were signs, signs and billboards included in the eighty-eight?
Visions is, it looks like it's twenty nineteen.
No, but he wants the original.
He's talking about the original, he wanted to know when it was. I think the effective, I'm guessing, but I think there must have been some provision for this article in the original. Adoption of the zoning resolution.
Let's see, signs though in the township, because.
Yeah.
Yeah, but somebody could come, somebody could come back and say, hey, I had this, this sign's been here since, you know, day one. And if we can't, if we don't even have a date, if we can't even say, well, it's gotta be before, after nineteen eighty-eight or two thousand nineteen or something.
Right, let's verify that, but if this section was in there. In the original version of eighty-eight, that's where.
I just love to see if the original, like eighty-eight version is in the office. But I know that like the resolution book that's sitting out for us to like look through it when we have questions, has been changed over and updated as we've updated everything.
And one.
I'm sure the original's in there somewhere.
Yeah, one time I know for certain it was there because I looked at it.
Yeah.
Now, what's happened since that, that was before you were here.
Probably in my sort of.
Before my cannon was here.
I will look for it, I'm sure it's in my somewhere.
Yeah, so I'm not, and I don't know, because there's been a lot of improvement made in the organization in the office, so that probably got picked up and put somewhere.
I, I might have a copy too, just a matter of finding.
I don't know if I do or not, I've got a couple of old versions.
But, I mean, that, so the intent, the original intent was that date. But this also means that once you make, here. Any sign that you weren't sending violation letters to that now become. I mean, they're still legal, but even these, even when this gets updated. These amendments don't apply to a sign currently.
What, what was the situation when this article was writ, what was, what was allowed and what was pretty?
It's almost like the first paragraph should reference eighty-eight. Uh, and the second may reference, uh, any. Subsequent, well, you should say.
Any signs that were in existence, would we, well, once we make the revisions, if that, a sign was already there. Though, the revisions don't necessarily apply to that sign, but if they change it, that's.
Eighty-eight isn't the only issue that this is trying to capture, it's also trying to capture.
Correct, that's what.
Anything that you're now gonna say five square feet and this one's six, even though it was fine last week, once this gets amended. It's still fine.
Yeah.
You wish it would go away, but it's still legal until. It gets destroyed. In the middle of the night.
Yeah.
And, and the only other thing that I noticed about signs was we talked about, uh, wall mounted and, um. Um. Ground mounted, and not having posts. And I've been driving around the Kent Township, taking pictures of nice signs on posts.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I just.
I, I knew that, working through it, but again, I was pulling from the overlays, doesn't have to match everything, but.
Yeah.
And I've seen some pretty, I mean, that has a rural look, when you have the post and the signs hanging on it, that, I don't have a, personally, I don't have a problem with that.
Hmm.
And some of them are substantial, it's not like the thing's gonna fall off.
Okay. The, the standards group will tell us.
All right. We'll see you then on the fourteenth, and, uh, articles twelve and fourteen will be the items that we expect to move forward. Uh, reaching completion. Uh, so that shouldn't really take us too long out of the time that we have for the meeting, and then we'll move on to deal with, uh, article twenty-two. Anything further? Motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Moved by Johnny, she beat you. Thirty-second.
Johnny's ready.
I'll get you updated in the mid.
Second, I seconded.
All right.
I actually had that one.
Moved by Johnny, seconded by, and we are adjourning at nine thirty-one.